Right in the, I'm just trying to get through your spot, so.
Exactly.
Hi, I'm Amy.
Amy, I see you, John Hill.
I got some stuff here for you. Do we have any?
He got us the easel. The easel actually was on the hall. I didn't realize that the easel could be, had to be confirmed down in this small little thing.
Yes, I can. I'll be back in person, I think, for the next meetings.
Yay!
I think it's time. I can write in my book. Well, forget.
Just a few minutes. I'm just gonna wait a couple more minutes. Greg's coming. Oh, I see you, Laria. We're never getting these over, then we're never gonna know who's coming or going, because here everything creaks. So I know. Oh, look at that! I just said, we're gonna wait a few more minutes till the first word, Greg's. Okay, well, it is seven o'clock. And we have just about everybody here, so I'll start our meeting. Today is Wednesday, April 6th. This is the South Atlantic. Landing morning. Um, I'll take a roll call. Hershey, first stop.
Here.
Greg Zinser.
Here.
Ken Conley.
Here.
Bernal Bailey.
Here.
Phil Cole.
Here.
Betsy Randall here. And Manley Goof is not here this evening. So, as I said the last time, all members regarding or regardless of if you are an alternate or not, can always participate in our meetings. But only can vote if if one of the by plane where members are not here. So because Manley is not here for now, as our first alternate, he will be a voting member tonight. Um. Is there anybody here from the public that has anything to discuss this evening that is not on the agenda? Okay, so nobody's here from the public. That's something to talk about. It's not on the agenda. Um, meeting minutes, the approval is not going to happen this evening, but Amy is going to get those to us to approve at our next meeting, which is in two weeks. I would like to have a motion to move our new business up to the front of our agenda so that they don't have to sit here and listen to us talk about ordinance work. Is everybody okay with that? Hershey, you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
So Chris Berry, I will let you take the floor.
All right. So, good evening again. My name is Christopher Berry with Berry's Engineering Engineering. Tonight, I'm representing Mr. Robillard, who's a longtime citizen of South Berwick. In his endeavor to sort of finish a development out on Stevens Road and Blackmore Road. So to put the project in perspective, there was a project that we received approval from this plating board or fire plating board on the Parmley piece here off the end of Blackmore, which is currently under construction. Think all of the wood frames are up on that one. One more building to go up on that project. As part of that project, Stevens Road was reoverlaid down to the intersection, which was a partnership with the Department of Public Works. This intersection was redeveloped and then Blackmore Road was reestablished down to that piece of property. In doing that, we had worked with Mr. Robillard to ensure that we had the ability to modify the intersections and the geometry for that project. And in so doing, created some opportunity for the final development of his site. So 55 Front Street is the site that Mr. Robillard currently operates here on this portion of the intersection. And what the proposal is, is to redevelop the entrance to that project, generate five more townhouse style structures here along Stevens Street, keeping the former right of way of Blackmore Road still open and free with a through lane. And then develop six single family townhouse style structures off from the newly constructed Blackmore Road. This is the B1 zone, which does not require any setback requirements. There are no density requirements for the exception of a maximum of six units per structure, which we don't exceed. And these would be built as typical townhouse styles, so parking under the structure and then two floors above that with living space. We don't have any architecturals here this evening, but as we move forward, we will put together architecturals and streetscape views, just like we did for the prior project. So the drive oils that are proposed are simply to allow for turning and entering and exiting through the garage doors at the front base. And then same thing on Blackmore Road, which this front's on. There would be no parking that would be permitted in front of those structures. There's no space for that there. We have conducted a preliminary stormwater analysis, so we have a pretty good idea of how stormwater would work for this project. Currently, there's a stormwater detention cell that was constructed at the center island that would be modified slightly. And then we had some additional stormwater in this location and this space is reserved for stormwater also. So we wouldn't be increasing flow off the property in any one direction and wouldn't be increasing flow to the project that is currently under vertical construction there on site. So this is a preliminary sketch plan review. So this is about the level of detail that we've provided for that sketch plan analysis. And then we would come back to you with full engineer plans as time progressed. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them if I could.
Um, I'm just guessing. Is wondering, Mr. Robillard?
I am.
Oh, very nice to meet you. Nice to meet you. So did you, are you the one that also developed the one up the street?
No.
Oh, that's you. Okay. All coming around. So I will, I want to open it up to the rest of the board to ask questions to, but right off of the gate from the last project, I know we're going to want to track it. That was one of the, one of the first things that came to mind when, when I saw it. But yeah, is there anybody? Oh, go ahead.
I'll just speak to that.
Sure.
Briefly, just so that to sort of understand most of the board members except for Hershey were board members then. So we, for that project, I forget how many units were there, was it 25, 25 units? The board had requested that we produce a traffic study. For this level of projects, we hired a professional traffic company, Tep LLC, who conducted analysis of the site, but also the surrounding residential network to give the board a good idea of what impacts that project had on that surrounding network. And then we would ask him to do the same exact thing and add this project to that network so that you could see how the increases are managed throughout the network and the turns at 236 and Main Street and all of the other areas where traffic is proposed to come, go from.
Chris, thank you. Yes, Bernal.
Yeah. Looking at this, there are parking spaces called for. Unless I'm reading it incorrectly, where are they going to be?
So parking for all of these units are under the unit. So this is a townhouse style structure.
Yeah, understood. Yeah. All those would be under the thing, let's see. Because a 22 spaces required, okay? There are spaces underneath, but so there are no exterior spaces required.
That's correct. That's correct. So each unit has two spaces in a garage.
How many bedrooms?
This would be a mix of two to three bedrooms.
So what if there's like a.
That's something that these two gentlemen will have to work out in terms of potential for overfloor parking or shared parking arrangements. There are some smaller areas on site where we could add some additional parking for those instances.
Okay.
And I have a couple of extra parking places with my units that are there now.
Okay.
So, which I have all the stuff.
Okay.
So, sorry, I don't mean to keep interjecting. So this, this site and this site are all kind of intertwined with 55 Front Street. And so when we apply for a full application with you, we'll give you a full picture of how the site will operate.
Okay. Hey. Hang on one second, Greg.
Yep.
Greg's going to speak. No, go ahead, Greg.
Oh, you said, hang on.
No, I'm sorry, I said, I was talking to her.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead, Greg.
Can you just orient me real quick? Where is the, the, the DPW garage?
Uh, so this is Dawson Street, so I believe.
It's well before, probably 300 yards to DPW direction.
Yeah. In this direction.
Okay, so we're out there. There's another unit being built. Where is that on? That's over there. Okay, so this proposal right now is for these two that we see here.
Right.
Okay. And you referenced earlier in your presentation, the right of way.
Yes.
My, I haven't, I'm not overly familiar with the area. Kind of odd layout when I went here with the roads and how they work. From my perspective. But is there a current right of way or redoing all of the roads? You said you're leaving the right of way.
So, uh, I'll back up to provide a little history. So originally before John arrived to do the project from us with Mr. Parmley here in conjunction with Mr. Robillard, this was a sort of a Y intersection. So Stevens Street came down and bent like this. And Blackmore Road peeled off at this weird wide, wide gravel. And it comes across and then crosses the tracks and then there are some residences in Berwick. So to do this style project, we really felt like this really needed to be a proper intersection. And so Mr. Robillard allowed us to reconstruct Blackmore Road on his property to create this intersection with Stevens Street. However, from a land surveying and a right of way title examination, we don't want to block this former area of Blackmore Road at this time because we don't want to claim against us that we've blocked somebody's access. So if you've noticed, if you've been out there, the gravel for that is still there. And this layout is solely based on the idea that we are not blocking that throughway with our structures.
Which leads to the, we can't have parking out there or.
That's right. There are, like I said, I alluded to, there are other areas where we could provide small incremental parking areas. And we'll certainly look into that upon final design.
With the new road layout, and I certainly understand from like an administrative perspective, that there are no desire to go to the other landowners who theoretically have that original right of way and have, have that changed somehow, or is that just going to be somewhat untenable? That way you can have parking there, you know, because I do see it being a issue.
Yeah. Here from a surveying point of view, Chris will tell you that, you know, it's always good to not extinguish it right away. And that's why we want to keep it there. But in reality, we, we really have extinguished it by running the new road there. But, you know, somebody gets in there and, you know, was using it 200 years ago, potentially got us, they could say, well, that was the right of way that was prescribed. So it's always, how do you extinguish it prescribed right away? So it was, it's great, and you're a surveyor, you're doing this all the time, Chris. So.
And there's probably 20 people that had access to that across the tracks in Berwick. And that's how their, their access, their access to their homes was. So, and you know, how do you get 20 people onboard?
I think there are ways to incrementally add parking without really blocking that also.
Except to say from a practical perspective.
Yeah.
It's going to be an issue. Pulling into the garage every night. But could be wrong.
Yeah, we're doing 21 forces right now, and the only planning is this 30 feet of separation directly. And we, we've calculated how many people rent these units out that we have like almost 200 units. And the fact of the matter is, we average 2.1 people per unit. They may be a little bigger, but that's people like space, a lot of good work in the bank or whatever. And in portion of this, 1.8 people on a six size unit. People live different than we think they live. And they don't live a lot of company, a lot of bodies. People are pretty funny how they operate now.
Yeah, we didn't have any problem. It is, I have several units there that I rented to just single parents.
So, Hershey.
Did I notice in the application that it's in a shoreline overlay district?
So, um, portion of the property may be. I wanted to mention that in my application because I didn't want you to think that I was either forgetful or trying to not bring it up. But we have not surveyed located the stream that's in Berwick to know for a fact whether or not these structures are affected by that shoreline. But again, we would undertake that level of effort for final design.
I own the other side of the river of tracks and civil consultants and did that study. So I have that study.
Okay, great.
And can I, can I ask why you're waiting for final design to get that squared away when it might have a big impact on what happens? Or do you just think it's.
Uh, well, it's, our current design is based on aerial photography and, and georeferenced information. So it's, it's not a guess as to whether or not we're in or out. We just know we're very, very close. So until that's surveyed, we won't know for sure.
Okay, and it's, what is it, a 200 foot or 100 foot setback? It's 100 feet, right? You can build within 100 feet. Is that right?
I have to check. If maybe, if my memory is correct, it's either two or 250.
Okay.
And that requirement is multi-family is not permitted inside that zone.
Oh, Bernal.
Yeah, just looking at the level of the ground out there. We have the old right of way that's covered with gravel there right now. Uh, is that going to be the, the level or elevation of that concrete pad out there and then that's where the garage is?
Yes.
Is that a lot of fill in there or how's that going to work?
So the, the level of the garage will be at the gravel level of Blackmore Road now. They would have, they would have to essentially build their frost wells down and build up with sandy material inside their structure. So it would be about four feet of material. Below, below Blackmore. Yeah, because there's, there's a hole there.
Is there any vegetation that has to be cut back?
Yes.
Do you know what the type of vegetation is?
Maples mostly.
And what about like slope? Is any, is there any ground taken out to level?
Uh, this area would be, material would be brought in to level this. And then this area would be shaped into a rapid infiltration pond or detention pond. So it'd be sloped down into a hole.
Okay.
You have that building, this already filled in, or have that building. Right, it's just the other, the, the last half of it that needs to fill.
Right.
And then just the last half of it, the trees got.
Um, does anybody know about, I don't have any idea about native species. We, we talk a lot about animals, turtles. Anyone you know? There's.
We've never seen a turtle. Pretty sandy, it's like dry sand to China. It's just sandy sand. Sam would tell you if he was around.
Yep.
What did the prior traffic study reveal? If you go off the top of your head.
I do, so I do enough traffic to know, to read a study. We produce small studies, so I was pretty comprehensive with it. I actually did a lot of fieldwork with Kim when we produced it. So essentially, these units, these style units don't generate as much traffic as say a single family house does. So if a single family house generates 9.8 trips per day, these generate around seven to eight trips per day, total daily flow. In the morning AM and the PM peak hours are also reduced from a single family home. In terms of where this traffic goes, I think is the most important because you have the Main Street intersection, which gets jammed up, I think, on the regular. But the good thing about this density in this area is that there are multiple ways out of this neighborhood and out of the area without having to go through that intersection. So if you want to head north into Berwick, you can take Dawson Street or you can take Front Street out and bypass that intersection. And so Kim was able to review how the neighborhood acts from a traffic management standpoint and then allocate our trips in the same percentile fashion.
And you said over on the right hand side that there will not, there's not enough room for parking in front of the garage doors, essentially. Okay. And do, do we, do we know if there's anything in any of our ordinance is related to like curb cuts? You know, in terms of how wide an opening can actually be, you know, how many entry points can you have? That's a long, you know, I'm just, and I asked that with traffic coming and going, if someone's going to be backing out of their, you know, garage and five feet behind you is the roadway.
Right.
You know, line of sight and everything comes into play and.
Right. So that's. So we can, we can certainly have Kim take a look at that as well. I think a lot of that would have to do with the amount of traffic coming and going over the tracks. So with there not being a whole lot, you know, development of residential activity over here, that level of safety, that safety concern is decreased.
Sure. So you just said there's another unit. Sure, so you just said there's another unit, the one that I saw being constructed further to the right.
Yes.
How many units was that?
Twenty-five.
So there's twenty-five units that will be using that road, so. Okay, and it's just a concern, you know, especially the high times of the day, you know, got your cup of coffee, you're backing out, you know.
Phones ringing, reverse.
Yeah.
Kids screaming.
We all been there.
So it, so then is. So right now it doesn't show on that. The old Blackmore Road comes to new Blackmore Road Stevens. So is, I'm just thinking like, no removal, are you gonna be blocking that then?
Uh with snow storage, there may be a snow power.
So. Technically it's a right of way, but like in the winter. Um I'm being a little picky.
No, no, I mean, no, it's so, there's, at what point? Does, and this is the internal discussion that we've had. At what point does their prescribed right of way not become prescribed? If they use this. So at some point in history, as time goes on, this prescribed right of way would naturally extinguish. I can't tell you if it happens tomorrow or two hundred years from now, but at some point, that takes place.
And there is a particular step, do you own, physically own that piece of land?
Yes.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, okay, so yeah, there is a particular statute regarding that, and that's a lot of times what you see in other areas is they'll. Block off the road one day a year to maintain to some degree, you know, uh essentially. Can eliminate that. There's multiple ways to do that.
It would be different if their deeds say you have a right of way and here's rights, this is more prescribed.
Yeah.
If you have like a retained pit there anyway, the snowplow would be any more obstruction than a big ditch.
Right. Right, but if the concern was for the gentleman, they don't want to give the impression to other folks that they're somehow eliminating this outright. You know, are you getting into taking another town down the road, someone making a phone call over here, hey, I have a problem, you're blocking off the right of way, and that's what I want to do. You know, just stuff that always ends up happening.
We've been blocking about probably six months, yes.
Yeah, and I know most of the people down the Blackmore Road and they, there's been no comment. Yeah, there's been no comment about they're upset at the road being blocked.
We're talking cones, we put cones up there, so it wasn't like a change of physical structure, we know.
And they appreciate it more because that area, it was. It was pretty funky, because some of the stop signs, they have an only stop.
Yeah.
And so there was a, it was a pretty funky area.
Did you ask the road commissioner to look at that and write a letter on your behalf?
I did.
Oh.
Yeah, and uh they uh they agreed that uh it would be so much better if that was tended, so.
Oh, you're talking about the, how we redid the intersection of prior projects?
I was just, no, I was thinking how you can somehow legally get rid of that idea of easement.
Oh, that, no, I I just talked to Joey and a few people about changing that intersection. When this whole project was was starting and uh they agreed, they went up there and looked at it. It was uh, it was a mess, actually. And now to the stop signs is pretty definite, is what you have to do.
So so far, we're just bringing up a question here right in front of the garage, this is right against the. Pretty close to the road there, correct?
So.
There're gonna be a bunch of complaints about a window in front of the garage.
So I think.
We're plowing everything.
I was gonna, I didn't want to say that without you saying.
We're plowing though, but I'm pretty sure the town was pretty good, they may make a pass through there, they may turn around, but it's not cast in stone. It's probably gonna be privately held for us, so we're actually gonna, to you and I, maintaining Dennis's property right straight through, so. Plowing is very important to us, we we remove a lot of smell, so it's very critical, and uh there's no issue with um. Us plowing, we'll plow that road, we're gonna plow across the tracks, we'll plow on our whole subdivision, so.
And before you, before you got started in this project, the town didn't plow that road.
Oh, right.
Yeah, the chef, Clint Schaff went and asked and got permission to to have the town plow that road.
Because we're privately owned, and we didn't know we should plow it at all, so.
So it happens when you're not involved.
So will. We would iron that out by plan demonstration and document, yeah, document.
So we have, we've talked about a bit of a list here.
Hmm.
Yeah. Point you've written down, just uh.
So uh obviously an updated traffic analysis, uh additional parking concerns. Concerned with the right of way and the parking, ensuring that we're, you know, we're outside of that right of way, if that's what we're committed to. Uh demonstrating the shoreline protection zone on the plan to ensure that we're compliant. Um basic vegetation removal um concerns and discussion, and I'll add.
And you'll submit a landscape plan with us, Chris, as well.
Hershey, did you have a comment?
Yeah, um you know, we um we talked about notification and doing it earlier, so butters get to weigh in, can we make sure that happens sooner than later? Is that okay with you?
I'm sorry, I was writing it down. Uh we can certainly do that, yes. Um concern about backing out of the units on the Blackmore and consider. How that's done with now approximately fifty units instead of just the twenty across the street. Um a better, better discussion uh and maybe a legal opinion on the prescribed easement rights. Uh maybe talk about these issues with the road commissioner as well. Uh identification of snow plowing and how uh that would be handled specifically in front of these units here. And then uh notification of the abutting landowners earlier in the process.
Great.
Chris, I show you one thing, one comment is that we can certainly stagger these back to the property line. And they can be spun, so they're twenty-four by thirties, they can be spun. So in order to do that, we'd have more, they'd have a nice spot in front, you create parking in front by these two, maybe these three. So there's some realignment that we can do with that.
That road line is set in stone, I can't push another tension though.
It's built.
It's built.
So you're not, yeah, we just built it. We'd rather not.
Yeah, um David, uh David uh also reviewed the application and he had some questions. Um that he sent to me, and I'm gonna have Amy for those to the board and to you. Um for review, and there's gonna be some things in there you're probably gonna wanna um go over, just so that uh. Just so that we kind of cross everything off. Obviously, we understand this is a preliminary plan, it's not like the full thing, so we don't want you to go way overboard, but. We also don't want to uh waste time and money and. So if you could review those things, um from David's list and the board as well, we're. Can review David's list in preparation for the next meeting, and I think we're good with that.
One more, but.
Oh. Go ahead, Brown.
You talked about you, you could rotate that just a little bit to uh. Ease that property line here.
Yeah.
That would take it closer to the road, would it not?
No, further away from the road, I would move the units back up against the property line. Does that make sense, Chris, what I was saying? And I gave up one of it, he always does this, saying, oh, I'm gonna do this later, so uh he's gonna figure it out, but the thought process was. That this could be spun sideways right here, this can go back to the line, that can go back to the line, they can all go back to the line, let's consider a lot of space. It's certainly gonna get parking out front for those units as well.
Oh.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
John. What most in the room don't know or understand, John has a very good relationship with the abutting landowner here. Uh so we have some flexibility there.
Yeah, we actually cut all the trees down for them, and we're actually tomorrow deciding, we're gonna be stopping that area, seeding it, replacing the fence on the property line. They were very cooperative people, so we're gonna have to work with the Johnsons.
Is there any setback requirement you want to strike?
No.
I have a question, do you think it'll be ready for the next planning board meeting?
When is the next one?
Sixteenth.
Uh likely not.
Okay, by twentieth, I'm sorry, twentieth.
Uh.
Two weeks from now.
Yeah, like likely not.
I think someone wants you to be.
That doesn't make it so.
Exactly.
Yeah, because the board needs it a week ahead of time.
Right, we need it this time of the week, yeah, catch up, okay.
Okay.
Great, thank you guys so much.
Right, we we also would, with the notifications, sorry for jumping in, will want to note uh notify Berwick. Also, because we'll likely need to have a joint meeting with them. With the planning board.
Why, David?
Because their uh their town line is within five, well, within how many feet? I mean, it's touching the town property line, the railroad tracks, basically.
Um they do it for Blackmore.
No.
Yeah, we did not do that for Blackmore Road.
Okay, we didn't need to, okay, good.
No, but I I almost think that we maybe send like a letter to the town supervisor. Or we ask you guys to send a letter to the town supervisor to let them know.
David, your predecessor, was he also the planner in Berwick at the time?
Yeah, probably.
I think.
There was an issue around the road, is what it was. Actually, uh I believe Lee J is uh doing uh Berwick right now, so I could certainly uh ask him and I'll just make him aware of it. But I'll I'll forward, I'll forward the comments that I had uh Chris electronically, so you could cut and paste and respond to those.
That's great.
And Chris, um can you add the conservation commission to that list of letters, please, Pat Robinson? Great, I think we're good, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, you too. For discussion items, uh first is to review. Planning board meeting policy, however, the town council. Will need to review it, determine if it needs to go to the town attorney, and then send it back to us. So we will not be having everything saved anymore, vote it, we'll go to town council and. We just wait until they tell us what to do with it, we should have it next week. Oh, we should, okay, great, we should have a next meeting then. Um in terms of the charge for medical marijuana registration for your home occupation. Performance standards, um I will give you an update. We had voted that we wanted an industry expert to weigh in. And I was very, very conscientious of who I, who I wanted to ask. Somebody who is not, would not financially benefit from a decision that was made. And so I asked somebody that we've had a great relationship with, the planning board. Um and although he was willing to speak to me, he was not willing to go on record. Um it. By um what was said, it sounded as though he was concerned that his opinion, he may get some backlash for his opinion. Um I then went to somebody else who again has experience but would not financially benefit. Um and again, would speak to me but would not go on record. Um so I will tell you what they told me, um and you can take it for what it is. Um and at that point, I wanted, I want us to be able to vote on whether or not we'll forego the letter or or not. Um so the first person, when I said we have agreed that two people on the same property can have five hundred square feet. Per the law. They were very surprised, they thought that was a very large amount of space. They thought that was a large operation, um and talking about it in a residential zone as a home occupancy, they were very surprised. That we would allow, uh we would allow a thousand square feet of canopy space for a business. The next person I spoke to said very had a very similar reaction. Wow, that's a lot of, that's a lot of, a lot of marijuana for uh. I didn't, I don't even know, but that was, that was a lot of plants for that type of operation and that kind of. Um in a home occupancy. And they said their rule of thumb is that the canopy that you have should, is. Is about a quarter of the space that you actually need to run the business, which means. If we're allowing, allowing a thousand square feet of grow, that would translate into a four thousand square foot operation. Um. Again, I asked both of these people to write a letter, and they did not want to go on record. Um which I understand. Um but that being said, I think that that information is enough for us to go on for a vote. However, I do want us to vote on whether or not to forego the letter, and if. And and see, and if if everybody can agree to forego the letter, and we can try another vote, great. But if we don't want to forego the letter, then I'll make a decision after that, what's next. So, does anybody have? Does any, anybody very strongly against foregoing the letter? Meaning they do not want to move forward until we find somebody who's willing to write a letter.
Do we have any idea how long that would take yet to do that?
Um, well. This, it has taken me a long time to get to people because part of the problem was, they were happy to talk to me and they were happy to agree to a letter. And then when I follow up, they're like, well, you know, I don't know, I don't know about writing it. You know, maybe I'm not, I'm not the right person to talk to. And then all of a sudden, they just stopped talking to me, but there was no like, no, I'm not gonna write the letter. If that makes sense, so I've had two people do that, right? And so part of the problem is, the issue is complex. So it takes, it's gonna take a while for them to write the letter, I think that's part of the problem. Um for one, one example that the first person gave me was. You know, what kind of, what kind of product are they producing? Are they drying the product, because that requires a certain amount of space, but or are they? Or are they having, making the oil or whatever, and that, that needs freezers? So that creates a level of complexity to, to the, to the issue. Um and they really, both of them said that it was important to them. To address all of these different factors, they weren't just gonna write a letter and how to be brief. They, they both said, wow, this is pretty complex, I mean, there's a lot of factors. But I mean, at least one of them said, my rule of thumb for a business is. The grow is a quarter of the space needed for the business. That being, yes.
I knew this topic, but what was the apprehension of having somebody with a financial gain do write the letter? They would have more, they'd be more motivated to actually do it.
So what we were trying to get is an industry expert that could tell us how, how much square footage is needed to run a business. And what we, what we, if I were to ask somebody who would financially benefit from, from it, then. They could say, oh, you know, like, we, we really need like five thousand square feet.
Okay.
Or six thousand square feet or whatever, they're gonna make it the largest number that's gonna see, still seem like, okay. So and then say we, say we were to go with that, because it's the industry expert, and then they financially benefit, but it's actually not what's best for the town. So just trying to balance out, you know, what's best for the town, and asking someone that could financially benefit from our decision. Isn't in the best interest of the town.
A couple general questions, so what sticks out to me? In the conversation that you're recalling is. Both of the initial reaction was, wow, that's a big operation. And put in words in your mouth, tell me. But I believe I heard you saying, it's a big operation in a residential area. Something along that line. In the conversation, did they give you any indication other than this? You know, four to one approach of square footage? You know, in terms of. Because we were tossing around a thousand, then we were tossing around two thousand. And then at twenty-five hundred, right, they go out to the industrial zone, so. You know, that kind of. Did they give you any indication as to what was a good number? Other than this. So I guess. You know.
I know, I think I know what you're saying. And like the first person was kind of like, well, I mean, I definitely wouldn't go much over a thousand square feet. But I don't know if he was talking about the canopy or like the whole thing. But I mean, I guess when I look at, when I look at it, it's kind of like, well. What's the point in having 2,000? Putting it at like 2,000 square feet, like I've put out there before, because then it's like, well, you have a thousand square feet of canopy. And then a thousand square feet isn't going to do it. So. They didn't really say, but I will say that my opinion following the conversations is that. You know, I think 1,200 square feet that Greg, you've put out before is a fair. A fair amount. And then if they want to process, they're going to have to go offsite somewhere else. But like you said, 2,500 square feet, we're sending them out to. Out there, so it doesn't even make sense.
Yeah, so what sticks in my mind? Hershey, go ahead.
I, 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 I think, I think one of the difficulties is when you say a residential neighborhood, everybody thinks of like Aggie or Old Mill. Right? Which is fairly dense and doesn't think of places like, you know, R5 or even R3 where I live, where. People have several acres, in which case it's not so dense and it's not such a big operation. And people have barns and warehouses out here and everything else and. Things that are in fact, to some extent, industrial scale. And so, you know, if you have 40 acres and you put your facility in the middle of them, it doesn't seem like such a big deal to me. So I think this shock of, oh my God, in a residential neighborhood, we don't know because they're not here to ask, but you know. To me, I would say the same thing if I were thinking of Old Mill as opposed to thinking of R5 and those are both residential neighborhoods. So I don't. I don't think we can take much away from that, really. In terms of how big it should be, except to go back to the fact that, you know, we don't know enough and it's not our business. And everybody gets to build whatever size building they want out there. And why should this be any different than? Once again, growing tomatoes or having horses or any other barns people get to build. So.
Oh, on the table right now, I need to know if there's a motion to forego the letter.
I have one other question here. Dave, did we? Did we pick your brain on this one? What you might have access to as far as? And this goes.
I just want to, I just want to say that we've, we've talked this thing to death. And David has put in lots of time and has put in his two cents a lot. I just want to make a decision. I'm sorry, but I, but I mean, we have talked about this so much. David has put so much time and effort into this. I, I either want a motion to forego the letter or a motion to, or nobody say anything.
So I'll make the motion to forego the letter.
Thank you. Is there a question? There any discussion? Okay.
Now, I'm still wondering about. Getting some more hard information, but let's press on.
Okay. So, yeah, so vote. Greg.
I, this would be clear. Yes, I am okay with, with not getting the letter.
Not getting the letter.
I don't think.
Forgoing the letter.
Forgoing the letter.
Forgoing the letter. Ken Conley? Renee Bailey?
No.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear, I couldn't hear Ken. What did Ken say?
I'm okay with not getting the letter.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Ken.
Renee?
I would still.
Hershey?
I'm okay without the letter.
And I'm okay without the letter. So that passes to forego.
I'd like to make a motion. I motion that we send our recommendations to the town council and that they struggle with this thorny issue themselves.
Hershey?
No, all right.
I can, it dies. Do I hear?
Betsy, I'm gonna. Based on. What, what I heard is at the end of the day, this is going to go to the council anyway.
Yep.
I would move that we set that square footage limitation at 1,200 square feet. As. From a couple of meetings ago. So I would make that a motion.
Okay, I will second that. There any discussion?
May I make a clarification?
Yes, David.
Of what that motion was. With the 1,200 square feet, the last we talked about that was, that was the designated area in its entirety.
Yes, yeah.
Correct. Okay. And that's for two people. So, and what about one person by themselves that are limited to the five?
Limited to square feet and the growers independently would be limited to their five, yes.
Okay, independently, all right.
1,200 kilometer square feet. Yes, Ken.
Yes, I too shook some trees. And as.
Hey, sorry, Ken, can you, can you speak up? I just can't hear you. I've got.
I says, I too shook some trees over the last three weeks and was surprised what I got from feedback from people in. Not as pointed as questioning as Betsy, but as in the industry and in the community as well. And. It was surprising that was large. They come up, but also they weren't overly enthusiastic about. That type of, say commerce in the residential area. So I just took that as some information I should consider. And before I was largely leaning towards. Fair work area and invitation was not inhibiting neighbors. I'd laid back a little bit, just with feedback from. Fair amount of people, actually.
Any other discussion? Not, I'll take a vote. Brad Zinsir?
Yes.
Hershey Hershott?
No.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ken Conley?
Yes.
Betsy Randall, yes. Oh my gosh, it's password time! Oh my gosh. David, are you going to, will you write that up and send it to the town council?
Uh, should I forward that straight to you and, or do you want me to just send it straight to them or how?
Oh, you're right. It needs to come to me first. I'm sorry. So, yeah.
You got it.
Thank you. Awesome.
So at one of the future meetings, just as a follow-up to that, I do believe that the council asked us to review. For what it's worth, the licensing. And there was always debate about it's the licensing us or is it them? The prior board said it was them, but they said, well, we want you to look at it anyway. Can we ask? Dave to kind of look at our, the new proposed ordinance that we voted on tonight? And the licensing and Dave, can you just let us know if there's any inconsistencies or problems between the two?
Well, one of the, one of the issues is the. The clerk's office is actually doing the licensing ordinance. So what I need to do is I need to meet with the clerk and, and see what they're. A lot of what you have done now needs to be incorporated into their licensing as like a check off. And so I'll obviously work with them and, and make sure that gets in there, but you know, I. They'll probably need to wait up, you know, I'll make sure those comparisons are done. If there's anything shocking in there, I'll. I'll get back to you, but they just were waiting for the reference point of where we were putting in the ordinance and, you know, what chapter and this and that. So. I'll give all that to them in, in the memo to Amy.
That works. I just didn't want to forget that so that we were done with it.
Thank you. Yeah.
I, thanks for the reminder.
Who gets to come off the agenda? Yes, it comes off the agenda. So next on our agenda is solar farms. And David had a very nice chart. That he provided with us, for us. And I didn't know, David, if you could share your screen.
I. Hold on, let me get out of marijuana here. Solar farms, here we are, and oops. Solar farm spreadsheet, do you want the spreadsheet?
If you could, that would, well.
Okay. I wasn't sure if you wanted to go through the report or the, I mean, the, the ordinance or the spreadsheet. So you want to hit the spreadsheet? I'm just opening it. Hold on one sec.
A little bit about, about what you found out from other, from other farms first.
Yeah, sorry, Dave, we were hearing some background conversation going on too.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, let me share this with you. All right, it should be. All right, can you see some red lines across? The board here?
Yep.
I, I had to take some of the information to save time on, on this. So there's in the spreadsheet I created, there were two different spreadsheets. The one on the top, which I started putting it together when I was gathering information before, and I wish I would have oriented. Everything the other way, so you didn't have to scroll over. But these at the top, at this top spreadsheet are all towns that I did some work in. There was two town of Sweden ordinance as, excuse me, solar farms. And they had a combined six and a half megawatt. They were adjacent properties, two different owners. So that's why those are listed like that. We had a couple here in three in South Berwick. Four megawatts, six and a half, and all just under five. Elliot had under five. Freiburg had a 1.8 megawatt, but really basically all the ones that I looked at really. Were about 20 acres to do one of these, you know, solar farms. I mean, it, it really varied. I mean, some of the lot sizes were 155. They were using 24 acres for the solar farm. But some of those may have, you know, because of wetlands and this and that. But generally, you need about 20 acres to put in. The farm around there. So I think with that sort of ballpark. And a little bit of research with Code Office and myself, we should be able to come up with what the traditional sort of. Household solar farm, so we can exclude them from the list. I kind of thought that was the next step on here.
Right now, I know that you have, if you scroll down, there's like the asterix, actually the backup.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, the, this was the. Right here, this is the combined projects in Sweden. So that's why I listed them together. But again, they were on two separate lots, so they were. You know, they were separate but together, they were powered together. And the one of South, the Clean Tap Energy withdrew the application that we were reviewing. They were, I thought, fairly close. I, I don't recall why. I think they just didn't act on it, didn't act on it. We said, we're going to withdraw it if you don't. And I did get a withdrawal letter, but. We'd already gone through the process, so I did include it on here. Now, below the one that I did is this blue spreadsheet here, if you can see it. And this. I'm sorry, go ahead.
You, you mentioned that they got withdrawn. I think it had to do with a right of way with the town at the hill there and that what the. What department is it up there that has something on the hill, on Powderhouse Hill?
Oh.
It doesn't matter, but MBD solar also didn't get built, right?
Uh, no.
Right, okay.
So that, that got approved, correct?
You know, it got approved with conditions. We were still.
Correct. And we're waiting on the conditions. So, yeah, not built.
Right, okay, sorry, just checking.
Yeah, so, and, and then what I pulled here is when we started at SNPDC a while ago. I said, there seems to be a lot of solar stuff going on. So I started sort of tracking my own and they started tracking. Theirs also, but again, here's, they, they hadn't crunched the numbers the way I would have, and it was really broad data. But I thought it was good to sort of include that they have the wattage here for the different things and how much acreage. And again, it sort of falls. Most of them fall around that 20 acre-ish mark. So. I, I thought at least that told us something that almost every. Every solar thing that we've gone through here or that we've tracked thus far, I'm trying to get more numbers, but I think 20 acres is a good. A, a good size or, you know, you say anything that's going to develop 15 acres or more into a solar farm and then we'll figure out where that. Or so people could do private farms or sell back into the grid or something of that nature. I don't want to limit that. Unless the board wants to, so. So questions on this or?
I mean, it's, it's all like really interesting to see especially how many acres. How many acres are used, right? It's about 20. But then you see some, it's like, well, 24 acres on 155 acres. But then you see a 20 acres on a 30 acre and you're kind of like, well, what does that look like? Cause obviously the 24 acres on 155 acres, you could see that if it's 24 acres, dead in the middle. Like, nobody's going to see it. Nobody's going to even know it there. But like, how does that change when you're on 30 acres and you have closer neighbors? People sharing property lines, then all of a sudden, I think that's what I would be. Most concerned about and something that came up with, I think, NBD solar was, you know, how, how. How the land is sloped, right? So, you know, the solar farm. Seems like it's kind of far, but it's on a slope. And then all of a sudden, that person's backyard is a just giant solar farm.
Right.
Right, so, those are my concerns, still.
Uh, uh, can I stop sharing this for the moment or? Yep.
Oh, a question, maybe Dave, kind of along the line with what Betsy was saying. Really probably for everybody consideration, is there, is something like along the. What am I trying to say here? Like the. The lot, a lot coverage type of approach towards, you know, what's the density? That we, that we would allow. So that way there's a fair calculation across the board. You know, so we're not saying initially outright that. You know, someone in 150 acres, because of what Betsy said, they have a better suited to do in a 20 acre parcel. For solar panels as opposed to someone with a 25 acre parcel, essentially you're cutting the whole thing. There obviously is a difference. And I remember watching some of the prior, well. Somewhat connected to this density issue is also, you know. Really, what gets back to what Hershey was saying is also where are these going to be, you know? Uh, cause there was a lot of. In past meetings. It was a notification or the butters had no idea what was going on. I'm not. You know, the butters kind of like, whoa, what's happened here? But, you know, again, while it's not technically their property. You know, what I've been looking at in the area over in the vicinity of Powderhouse Hill is going to be cleared at 20 acres, you know? And it kind of crept up. And so. So I, I, I guess I'm going in a couple of different directions here, but maybe looking at a density issue. As a percentage of lock coverage, but also, you know, and another though, making sure that there's adequate notifications in there because. You know, that was an issue from what I recall a while back. Have you seen anything like that, Dave? Like a density requirement?
No, it's, most of the time I've come across, it's a setback requirement. And one of the things that I had suggested or that we talked about quite some time ago. I, I think one of the best ways to sort of look at the. Use itself is really, you know, if someone's got 40 acres and they're putting it way out back, no one's going to see it. I think that's. That's fine. They can, they can buffer. What I had seen with a number of these projects that have come forward. Is if they're in a rural zone, for example, and say they have a 50 foot setback. Okay, just, or 30 foot setback, whatever. Say they have 50 foot of setback. What they do is they push their. Development. So basically the fence is at that 50 foot setback line. And what happens to remain in between that 50 foot setback line, whatever vegetation may have existed, that. Is sort of left. And depending on what that, the other thing that comes into. Into the issue that I've seen on a couple of them recently is. I'll, I'll try and give you an illustration. So if you have a tree line and then they put their fence up here. Okay, so you have, you're so, your solar panels would be somewhere over here and you have your little six foot fence or whatever, and this is the trees over here. What a lot of the solar companies I've seen are doing is they have what they call a solar. What a lot of the solar companies I've seen are doing is they have what they call a solar corridor. So they cut the trees to get the best solar corridor. So what you have as a buffer, basically they trim the whole top. Think CMP, trimming the trees near power lines, they do that same kind of cut. So at the property line, they may have, you know, a 30 foot tree if it survives. But then it gradually gets lower to the six foot fence kind of thing. So my thought is that if you expand that setback, you'd actually have for this type of use only. So you wouldn't mess with the setbacks in any other district, but maybe you create a 50 foot no cut buffer and then, or 100 foot setback and they're allowed to cut that line, you know, 20 foot in, 25 feet into it or something. I just think it's something that the board may want to consider. You know, out in the middle of nowhere, if they're screened, no one's gonna hear it, no one's gonna see it, not a big deal. If they're close from the town, they've got a smaller lot and all of a sudden, like you said, a neighbor clear cuts their lot, puts the solar panels all over. But that's, that's just an issue that you guys can tell me what, how you want to do it. I was concerned when I saw that, it was a development in Elliott originally. And they were gonna, I mean, this, this, and I was appreciative that they had cut, you know, shown me this on, on their plans. Because I was like, whoa, that's being honest, but a little scary, so.
Thank you, David. Um, I, I personally like the idea of a no cut buffer. It's really then, it's almost like you're extending it without expanding it. So like, whatever our boundary line is, is the boundary line. Anybody else have a thought on that?
Are you, are you thinking about like a setback line, making the setback larger? Or just saying, whatever your setback currently is, that there would be no cutting allowed in that entire setback? Or, or combo?
Yeah, like whatever the setback is. I mean, that, that's my opinion. I don't know if anybody else. I just think of like, think of all the birds. That's where they all but their nest, on the top of trees.
You know, I, I would almost, just myself, having driven by them, you know, 50 feet or 30 feet really doesn't hide them, you know, and so, you can see these things clear as day. So, I would be interested in exploring a bigger setback. Yeah, I mean, that's not a bad idea, you know, visibly, you know, it's, it's kind of almost, yeah, Ken, I, I see where you're going with that, you know?
I'm sorry.
You know? Yeah, Ken, Ken said, Dave, kind of a line of sight, in other words, if you can't, we just don't want to see it from the road or, or a house or a boundary, you know?
Is, is that sort of the consensus of the board? Because I could sort of draft something and lead numbers or?
I'm thinking about it.
We gotta think this one over too.
What?
I said I have to think this one over too, it's just, you know?
The slopes are really, the slopes are what trip me up. Right? Because then it's like, you know, what if somebody's house is on a hill? I mean, they can see miles and miles and miles, all of a sudden, all those miles, you can't have a solar farm? Because somebody that lives. Yeah, I know. Same, like, slopes, slopes are what kind of trip me up.
Well, again, along with that though, you know, I mean, you can't protect everybody, right? But, like, so if you look at that line of sight kind of approach that Ken was talking about and, you know, layer on top of that, that, I don't know how you would do that, you know, but a density issue. Because one of the things that we're all kind of saying is, you know, well, a, a development on 150 acres is a lot different than a development on, you know, a 24 acre parcel. You know, so it almost looks like, you know?
Except when it's marijuana, right? Let me just say that. Nobody seemed to care about that when it was marijuana, but now that it's solar farms, everybody cares. Just saying, just saying.
And so, is there some merit in looking at that? I don't know. To get to your point, you know, you don't want to be on a hill and then, you know, see everything clear cut. But at the same point in time, you know, you can't tell someone they can't do it. You know, there should be some restrictions. I don't know.
There, I did have one case that had a house that was raised higher. It, it was slightly higher than the site itself that had the solar farm. And the solar farm company actually not only planted things to screen on their property, but he gave them an easement and they screened on his property too, because he was higher up. You know, screening down below didn't really help them, so.
Could there be a part of the ordinance that states wherever the solar panels will be, depending on a butters and location of them within the acreage, that's an on project basis, like you, you just, you go from there. Like, you can say, you have 100 acres, you want to put in, put in 20, and this is where it's gonna be. So that works, right? Everybody's happy. But then you have 40 acres and you have 20 acres in solar panels. This person and that person, that person really get to have a say. Can you put that in your honor, that they get to have a say, that they get to come in and talk about it and say, you know, I don't know, I give them, give them the, Well, they do at a public hearing. Yes, but what I'm saying is, is it's an actual part of the ordinance that, you know, like, when we look at NBD, we're still waiting on a couple of things and it has to do with the butters, right? It's been growing on and going on and going on for a long period of time. Do you put that in the ordinance that states the butters get to have some sort of say? That really have a say in what's gonna, what the outcome's gonna be?
If your border is less than a certain five.
Exactly. If it's 100 acres and you're putting in a 20 acre solar farm, you know, no one's really gonna see it possibly. But then, you go to somebody like a 40 acre lot and 20 acres of solar panels and six people are really affected by it. The problem is that a butters change.
Based on, you know, things being quite that vague. If only we could, but, you know, you have people who want to do development a fair shot at understanding what is in front of them and, you know, and have it be a little more cut and dried for them and what they're walking into, I guess. So.
Yeah, I, I don't like writing ordinance that sort of gives neighbors a veto power over a development process. I do like ordinances that maybe say, you know, if screening, if screening to meet the ordinance cannot be made, then the applicant shall work with the neighbor, you know, if they need the neighbor's land to create a screen or something, but let me think about how, how I'd go about that.
I mean, I kind of like the idea of, so I'm thinking of Knights Pond Solar. Because being a sidewalk on that, that's a 20 acre on a 78.5 acre lot. Um, so that's like, so the project was a quarter of the total size of the lot.
Right.
So we could say, come up with that kind of number, like, the solar, the solar project can't take up more than 25% of the size of the lot.
The, the issue that, the, the issue that you may have is, you know, some of the, some of the sites that I showed you or the, the data I showed you, for example, one of them had like 155 acres and it was a 25 acre, you know, development area. That doesn't mean, if, if you start putting that kind of limit, that you could only have, you know, say 20% of your overall acreage. Well, that means that to keep the solar farm there, that property owner may not be able to, you know, put it in their own subdivision. If they want to put in a subdivision on their land next to a solar farm and, you know, they could, they could, they can work out their own screening kind of thing. But I, you know, but I don't think you want to just say, because someone may go, oh, solar farm, and five years down the road, you know, the housing market's going crazy, and then you go, sorry, you can't put any units in here until the solar farm's gone and the, and the land's reclaimed or something, but, whoa.
Well, that, I mean, that's a risk that develop, that solar farm person would take, right? Like, if it's, if it's that financially attractive to them, then it, it's a business decision, that's.
Well, they often are not the people who own the, the land. They are often on a long-term property lease with the property owner. Now, you can put that in there and it puts sort of the burden on the property owner to go, geez, do I really want to talk to these guys? So I'm gonna be limited to this. But with the land lease agreement, usually they'll say, okay, we're gonna put this, we're gonna lease it for 20 years. And in 20 years, we'll either extend the contract or, you know, keep the equipment up and things like that. Or we, we go into reclaiming the land, removing all the, the stuff, so.
And I think, I believe our plan is that a solar farm is still going to have to come through the planning board.
Oh, yeah.
You know, we do, we do acknowledge and speak to the property owner. And that's gonna be part of their research and due diligence is to realize what they're signing up for. You know, we, we don't want these businesses to come and take advantage of, you know, people in the town that have land and they don't really know what to do with it. Or they want to, you know, you know, take this opportunity to, you know, make some money and have the land use as something. But again, it's a business decision. If that's, if we say that, you know, we want, we don't, we don't want these larger solar farms on smaller pieces of property that have closer neighbors. I mean, that's what, that's what it is.
Well, you know what, we could, the, the board could do something like saying, you know, one of, one of the first standards, one of the first standard, yes.
Second, Bill was talking.
I'm sorry.
No, not a problem. I, I just think that one of the, one of the problems, and I was looking at all these lots and the smallest one is 29 acres, so they've got 20, 20 acre solar farmer on 29 acres. So they're all, you know, considerably larger lots than what they're putting the panels on or how many acres they're putting, developing with panels. But the problem is, you could have 155 acre lot and they're only putting in 24 acres of panels. But we're not saying it has to be in the middle of their lot. I mean, they could put it, sure, they've got a lot that's big enough, but they could still put it right in the smack dab next to abiding property. So really, the issue is not how big is the lot that you're putting it on. It's how close are you to your, the neighbors and how unsightly. So, I don't know if saying you can only develop a quarter of your lot into solar farms really solves the problem of, hey, I live, I live here and now I'm working straight at a solar farm, regardless of how big that lot may be.
Very true. I just want to say that it does solve the problem though of conservation. And that we're not clear cutting, clear cutting an entire lot. That's my only thing, but I know exactly what you're saying, and that might be, we need to add some.
So I, I think conservation is a little more complicated than, it's not just that you clear cut because certainly the land trust, is Pat here? No. The land trust could tell you that they actually, you know, they do responsible timber harvesting, that people should do it, there's a way to do it. That contiguous pathways are important, but there's also junk property and, and all land is different. And you have to evaluate all of it, and that's why to some extent this sort of one-size zoning for solar farms is difficult to, to parse, right? That, because every 20 acres is different, and the land trust, I think, will tell you that some are incredibly valuable. Maybe they're part of this corridor for certain species and some are not. Some are all cut up already, or the, the trees there don't match. I, you know, it just really depends. And so, this is the problem in thinking through where these should go or not go. And which is why it almost seems like you have to do it on a parcel-by-parcel basis.
A minimum setback 100 feet, limited line of sight, period. 60-day butter notice written requirement within setback of less than 500. 500 foot plus setback. Yeah, I agree. I think, I think one of the, I think the big part of the solution here will be the setbacks. Because if you can't meet the setback requirement, if your lot happens to be smaller, well, oh, well, that's noted, you know? And so, by the setback requirement, you can eliminate a lot of problems. And that will really tell you what, where it can and can't go. So, I like your two-tiered approach too, of, you know, you have this, within, then a notification beyond whatever you said. Yeah, I know, but I think that, that's an interesting approach. Then you really don't get into issues of density and lot coverage issues. You know, if you meet that stuff, then you can do it.
Can you also add into there something about the responsible for conducting some sort of wildlife study or something that would address some of the concerns he has in terms of pressing out? And that would sort of make sense at that lot, so.
They have to run it by DEP and inland fishing wildlife anyway. We don't need to make that. They already have to do that. I don't, I don't think there's anything we can make stricter. Is that right, David?
We, we actually, in the site plan review criteria, one of the, that's addressed in that. And you're right, the DP and IF&amp;W would have to sign off on it.
But there isn't a way for us to make it more than what, I mean, they already go as far as they can go, right?
You can be more, more restrictive than the state, but they're pretty, they're pretty darn restrictive. And at the end of the day, if DEP and, and IF&amp;W sign off on it, you know, I, that's pretty darn good, so.
So, David, would you want to bring up the ordinance?
I can, hold on one second. Hold on, I gotta hide you guys. There you go.
Yeah, I really do, the more I think about it, what he's doing that, I like your approach there. Two-tiered setback issue, I think that's maybe some merit.
So can you, could you explain the tiers again? Just speak up a little bit.
Minimum setback 100 feet, limited line of sight to be defined, period. 60-day a butter notice written, required with setback less than 500 feet. 500 foot plus, no setback required. I mean, no, no butter notice. And then a cap on the size or percentage of lot to be defined. Really pushing it pretty far away from a lot line.
Yeah.
And then, maybe if you're not, if you don't meet that 500, if you can't do the 500 foot setback, maybe there's a, a higher level of review as to why. Because obviously that's going to put you closer to the property, maybe then that would necessitate a higher level of review. What would the butters do, in other words? Could that end up being a showstopper or what?
We've had, we've had a lot of discussion in planning board meetings over the last few years. Butters coming to public hearings and public hearings are kind of like one of the last things we do. And they're disappointed that they're not aware of these projects before that point. They feel like by the time they find out and there's a public hearing, we make a decision so soon after that. They just don't feel like there's any time for, to catch up and figure out what's going on and how it's gonna affect them. So by giving them notice, it's giving them time to process it. Maybe think about, how is this gonna affect me and my property? So that when it does. Um, so that when it does come to public hearing, they don't feel like they're frantically trying to figure out. Well, what's going on? I, I don't really know what this project is, how is it gonna affect me? Oh, my gosh, I only have, you know, a week to figure this out. So it's really just giving them notice so that they can start mulling it over and by the time public hearing comes, they're prepared.
Right, but it doesn't, it doesn't change the fact that if, if the group who coming in meets the zoning code, there's nothing they can say to really stop that. Right? I mean, y- you know, you notify butters, you get them to weigh in, sometimes, you know, if you're a nice developer, you might yield to some of the things they ask for. But essentially, if you've met the code, you've met the code and, and it's just a matter of making people feel aware and empowered. But it doesn't mean that they can say it doesn't happen or it changes the outcome, really.
No? They do, they haven't in the past been very good at pointing things out to us that we're not aware of in that, in that area. And in, in a, in a way, it also helps us get information. Or at least get pointed in the right direction of things that we should be looking at and considering when we do make our decision.
Okay, thank you.
Just so you know, I did pull a couple of solar ordinances from other towns, so I'm going through them and seeing what we could plagiarize.
I love that.
Hey, I'm, I'm sure the board will change, if it's already been written, don't rewrite it. Plus, it's from my own organization, so they, they can't get mad at me.
Are you bringing that up on the screen, David?
I, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I've got it right here, so, uh, here we are. And which one? I think it should be here. All right, is, so here was the last one, we went through January nineteen, can you see it? Can y'all see that?
So can you scroll down?
Yep, but you could, okay, you can see it then, all right. Okay, so this was all the ordinance overview kind of thing, and. Then the ordinance was sort of shown here, so we'd had the performance standards. And we, there's some notes that I've added in here, so what I was gonna do is take some of the notes from tonight. Probably, and, and this was one of the things that we were just talking about, for example, setbacks. Uh, untouched, uh, the shade management areas are what some of these companies are saying. Uh, so you've given me some feedback on that sort of one-hundred-foot cut untouched, and there's some other numbers that you threw out there today. Uh, shade management, uh, visual mitigation, you've given me some feedback on that as far as the buffering. Uh, FAA we put in there, but I was, uh, I need to work out some, uh, some actual. Language for that as far as FAA review, notification, how that goes.
Oh, hang on one second, David.
Yep.
We, we have a FAA liaison with P's, I spoke with them on, uh. Uh, we've worked together on some of the, uh, initial plan for. Solar on the airfield, which is a little more of a touchy item. I sent you off a, a study with the, uh. The military did for the FAA regarding Blair, and it was all done with angular measurement. And in the end, after everybody got very up in arms, the, uh, solar community kind of changed the panel construction. And just by way of product change and majority of surfaces now are A R. That are already anti-reflective from the factory. And, uh, my FAA person had said the only concern he would say is draw a line around where your. Medevac pads were, as I spoke before on that, and define that. And not all that concerning, ten years ago, it was very much safe.
Where's our hel- hel pad? York Hospital? Okay, so we need to find out from Joe. Where those are, and then he said a thousand, two thousand square, uh, two thousand. If you ever want to put something in there. For around helipads.
Yep, and he said just tag it.
We just tag it as an AR zone.
Air zone?
Anti-reflective panel.
Yeah, I've got those in there.
You said, what was the environmental one, David?
Okay, uh, the environmental species inventory.
Okay.
Uh, and I put some of the species that we've come across in the past, you know, New England cotton tails, blanding turtles, spotted turtles, black racer snakes. Uh, uh, sign off from my F and W M D E P, uh, we also.
Sorry, i- isn't that something that inland fishing wildlife is going to do?
Yeah, they're gonna, they are gonna require that, but we also want to be able, uh, you know. The, the board should be able to see that whole findings and get that inventory submitted to us when they're submitting it for, uh, D E P approval. I F and W.
I, okay, I just feel like this isn't our area of expertise and to wade into there when there's a group that it is their area and they're dealing with it. Seems just redundant, that's all. No?
Okay.
For the report, yeah, we're not, we're not doing.
Right, we are, but we already asked for the report, we already get the report, don't we?
Yeah, and that's some of these I need to do a cross-reference with, if you recall, with some of the other ordinances. Because some of these things may have, uh, they're like, they're, they're not gonna put up a solar farm within, without getting site plan approval. So for example, example, the wetland inventory we talked about in, in site plans, so if it's redundant, maybe I'll just put a note, see. You know, site plan review or, uh, I put a, a catch-all that. Uh, solar farms are subject to site plan review and must meet these standards in addition to those. If that works for you.
Okay, yeah, yeah, whatever, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, we talked about side up, native seed mix, I found some good language for that, uh, just this week. Uh, the end-of-life restoration plan, long-term property conservation, uh, the rest, yeah, the restoration plan, public safety. All this was sort of knocks boxes, security fencing, a lot of stuff that they're actually required to do. But we want to see it on the plans, so, so police and fire can get in there if they need to. Um, emergency access plan, a, a lot of times the fence layouts. Uh, are confusing, so we want to see the exact fence layouts of where they're closed. So we need to have gates and where the gates are, so you can get, if someone needs to get in there, they can get through the, all the different gate systems. Uh, E nine-one-one addressing, I don't need to have that in there, I just put it in there to make sure that it has an actual date. I mean, excuse me, an actual address, so E one, E nine-one-one can respond, there's gonna likely be no one on site most of the time. Uh, yeah, uh, made unobstructed, pass for year round, if there was anything like that. Bonding and inspection fees, we started getting the, that I put some language in there, some of this is gonna need to be reviewed by, reviewed by the town's attorney. Uh, then we did inspections and, and the sort of standard language of other laws applicable. And the like, so. It's coming together.
So if you want to put in the things we discussed this evening. If we can have that by next, well, Amy would need it probably by Tuesday, so we can send it out for Wednesday. Um, then we all have time to review it and hopefully we'll be able to kind of bring things up. Does everybody feel like we're in a?
Not quite.
Okay, go ahead.
We were zipping through some things here. I'm sure the exact, uh, step in the process, we are here, but, uh, no, I do have some comments. Uh, like back on. It's a B seven here, ground metal, paragraph seven.
Uh, that's all the background history, sorry, let me get to the ordinance, there we are. These, okay. And what number?
Have an end-of-life restoration.
Oh, yes, okay.
Uh, first line up there, it says, the board may want to have applicant provide, uh, I would think we would.
Yes, yes, this was just, I didn't know if you'd want that, I, I think it's a necessary thing, just like a gravel pit, you need to know what it looks like. Thank you. I- if the board agrees that we shall have that.
I agree with that, we should require it.
Yep.
And then, uh. On a lot of that, what are the, are the requirements stipulated someplace to, should they be included by reference? Or do we need to spell them out and?
I'm sorry, I'm not, could you say the question again?
That the requirements for that written end-of-life restoration, what are the requirements? Are they spelled out someplace?
And we. No, no, basically, the end-of-life requirements would be reviewed by the board. And, uh, M D E P, I F and W kind of things, and. Uh, it would just be a document that is adopted by reference by the board. And so basically, they're gonna have to have bonding in place, and at the time when they have to restore it. They'll say, okay, this is what's gonna happen, the panels are gonna come out, we're gonna take all the supports out, we're gonna take all the concrete pads out. We're gonna restore these areas, we're going to replant X, Y, and Z trees, you know?
Right, now who builds that document?
Their lawyer, it's a decommissioning report.
Right, so, so basically, they'll make a proposal showing how it's all gonna be done, and the board gets to review it and say. Uh, wait a second, I, this needs to be done by X and it's adopted as the official record.
My lawyer will look at it too.
So as part of the whole plan, Burnell, when they give it, it's gonna be a separate document that says, hey, at the end of useful life, why? This is what we're.
So we, so, it sounds like we are setting the requirements, there's no, there's no document we go to, go to right now that says. This is, this is the, these are the requirements, and I could say, go to that document and you need those. That document apparently does not exist, we have to buy off on the, the requirements here, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, do we have guy, any, any guidance on that from other places or anything?
Yes, I, I, I've got some of those documents I can, I can pull up for you. Usually, usually the applicant pulls it together, they give it to the town, the town looks at it and marks it up, we give it to the town attorney. And any concerns, uh, that the board has that I have or whatever, we, we send them. We mark up their document or send a, a review document, the board would say to me, hey, they didn't address. Uh, uh, that they are planting native species, they just said, well, replant, you know, and those details will work out as we go.
I think I've read those.
Yeah, so what happens is, they, they have to make sure they have all of that set, and they, the lawyers usually will make sure that. Um, and they gets to the point where they even give us, um, like a decommissioning, there's a contract where they. Certain amount of money and somewhere they, it sits like a bond, like who's, she, he was saying. And that's just for the decommissioning of the solar farm, they, they have to have all of that written out and agreed upon all parties. He and for, um, for the junction.
So somewhere out there, there's a pile of cash sitting in an account or a bond. And they actually have that.
They're going to have to have that, yes. Yeah, and the town gets to make those arrange, the town has say on arrangements and that.
Right, you said bonds are difficult to obtain and they cost a lot of money to then maintain it over a twenty-year period. That goes, that's a, that's a, that's a, it's a liability against the developer, I'm not saying it's a good or bad thing, I'm saying. It's one thing to say it, but if we're actually requiring it, but that's a good thing, I'm just, from a practical perspective, is it actually? What we say, is it actually working? And so we have it, allegedly, we have this in. The ordinance, and I know I read them somewhere for this town, but is there an actual escrow account? And then who's the holder of that? Probably not the town, but. Or something, and then interest, you get, there's a whole host of other items. A lot of times, they never really come to fruition. Uh, but at times are just kind of overlooked, and so do we know? What is actually happening here? Do we need to have stronger language for that?
That's a good question for, for Tim.
Okay.
And the town council, because they would have to set up those, um. Right, they'd have to set up the contract, they have to set up the, the escrow accounts, uh, where who, I mean, I don't know.
Put it on the comment, on the, on the books and everything, so he comes to.
I don't know if it's on our books or if it's on the applicant's books, right? So how do they prove to us that they have that?
It, it'd be on the towns, on the towns' books.
It would be an actual liability of the town.
It would, we, we would hold the bonding.
Yeah, do we get the interest?
Well, the bonding, you know, again, it's a real issue, uh, you know, asking for a twenty to thirty-year bond, that's a. That's, that's, you're tying up a lot of money, you know? And again, I'm in favor of it because the money should be there to take care of that and fulfill their obligation. But we should really look into see if that actually is occurring or what a, it, it's really a legal question, you know? And, 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 well, I think it's a question to Tim.
Will you put that in there, David?
Yep.
And then additionally here in, uh. Paragraph D. The paragraph one. And two, they, they talk about some interest rates there and inflation rates, I think we're talking inadequate numbers here. Like, you know, I don't know, there are standard numbers, but this is, this is not, look. Like it's gonna work.
Yeah, some of this engineer's estimate and, and this is similar language, but again, it's gotta be reviewed by the town attorney and the town manager. Uh, for, you know, however they set up the estimate. I don't even know if the, if, if the, the planning board doesn't necessarily have to list that, they're just, we could have it simpler language, but. That's something I wanna, this is just language that I used and seen before, so.
Um, David, I'm wondering if it might be helpful, like there are gonna be certain things that, you know. That we aren't going to be able to maybe iron out. Can we highlight certain things so that when we send this to town council, we can say? The highlighted things are things you guys need to take care of. Everything else we've really gone through, if that makes sense?
Yeah, yeah, oh, you mean just give them sort of a, a memorandum saying these items, you know, if this ordinance passes. These are the other things that'll have to be done.
Yeah.
Kind of the document, like tracking and things like that?
Because ultimately, ultimately, town council's the one that votes to accept the ordinance, but what I'm, so what I'm suggesting is. We do the part that makes sense for us, we send it to them and say, we did our part, you guys finish up your part. And then you'll be good.
Yeah, I can do that.
I kind of like this whole bonding thing, yeah, hey, we think it's important, we're just not really sure how it works.
Yeah.
Right. Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, be- before it got to the town council, I would, uh, when, when we're really close on the language, what I do is usually send that to the town's attorney and the town manager. Let them look at it, make some legal changes, I'd bring that back to the board and say, just so you know, this is what, you know, the, the, the legal. Uh, the legal opinion is, don't include this language in the engineer's estimate, they said to use this. And then I bring it back to you guys before we formally send it to the town council. They said to use this, and then I bring it back to you guys before we formally sent it to the town council.
Uh, let me talk to, Tim or Mallory and just find out, they may just, because they're gonna have to talk to their attorney anyways. Let's just hold off on talking to the attorney. And, and see, they just want us to do our part, send it to them, and then they'll work out this stuff with the attorney, and then we don't have to do it. They're gonna be going to the attorney anyways, like, let's not pick up too much of the attorney's time.
Okay, you got it.
Any other comments on solar farms? Great. Um, any number of comments for the evening? Oh, so that will be for the next meeting. And it is a change of use, application that has to be put in front of the planning board because it's a change of use, but it's a pretty straightforward, simple, um, application, for a barber shop. Great, I don't hear any com- member comments, so I'll take a motion to adjourn. Anyone? Any discussion? Aaron Dunn, Hershey Herschel? Good night, everybody.
Good night.
I will.